Good evening, everyone. We're going to call the zoning board of appeals to order on this evening of April 5th, 2021. Lynn, would you like to do the roll call?
Sure. Laura Edmonds.
Present.
John Mahoney.
Present.
Jessica Cardone.
Present.
Ben Bielis.
Present.
Luke Tashian.
Present.
Richard Keratou.
Present.
Becky Walsh.
Present.
Cynthia Doll.
Present.
You have everyone, Madam Chair.
Okay. The first thing we'll do is we will go over how the meeting will run. When we call your case, we'll ask the presenter identify themselves and the property in question. State your request of the board and identify your hardships and the reason for the request. Remember, your hardship cannot be financial in nature and it runs with the land. The board will then ask you questions. You can, they will also give those other people who are present an opportunity to speak. You will be given an opportunity, once again, to sum up your request and answer any other questions. We are recording the meeting, so everyone must speak. Everyone that speaks must state their name. After we have gone through the discussion, the board will go into the business session to discuss and make a decision. There are five voting members on the board and it takes four positive votes for variance to be granted. Does anyone have any questions about how the meeting will be run? Are we all set? Okay. So we have on the agenda 96 West Cross Road for zoning variance upon application of Ryan Salvatore Design and DeAndrea Surveying and Engineering, authorized agent for John and Sharon Ferry. Am I pronouncing it correctly? Ferry. Owners for a variance of section 3.5 point D point one to allow coverage to be 4,830 square feet in lieu of 2,849 square feet for property in the one acre zone, map 24,03 lot 46. Who would like to start?
I'm Ryan Salvatore, architect for the project.
Go ahead, Ryan. Thank you. Welcome.
Thank you very much and thank you all. I am the architect for a proposed new house for Sharon and Jack Ferry. I'm joined tonight by my partner Mary Burr, by Jack Ferry, as well as Brian Smith from DeAndrea Surveying and Engineering. As I believe was mentioned when reviewing the agenda, the property address is 96 West Cross Road. And I thought what might be helpful is just to go through some quick site analysis to demonstrate the issues to you. What we're here for is a request as the chair reviewed for a variance on the coverage of the site. And the reason that we're here, our principal hardship, is that the site is split between Stamford and New Canaan. It straddles the two municipalities and as a result, our coverage calculation can only be based on that portion in New Canaan. And that therefore limits significantly what the coverage on the site is. Lynn, if it's possible, it would be great if we could use the slideshow. Thank you.
You're welcome.
If you could just go to the first slide. This is the existing condition slide. West Cross Road on the right side, the site is oriented almost exactly due north. Where Lynn is pointing is West Cross Road. The site is approximately just over 1.3 acres, a hair over. It currently supports a house that was constructed in 1954. It served by well and septic. As you can see from the grade lines, the site slopes pretty consistently, but yet pretty significantly from the street to the south. It's about a 25-foot difference in grade change from the street that way. And there is a subtle change as well from the western portion of the site, which is higher to the eastern portion, probably more like three or four feet in that direction. It's worth pointing out that we had a soil scientist, Bill Kenny, come out to the site. He flagged wetlands in the southeast corner of the site, right there. All of the wetlands is on the Stamford portion of the site. We are proposing no activities in the wetland or within the regulated area as identified by the Stamford Environmental Protection Board. We've done a conference with Kathleen Holland and she has confirmed that she has no intention or jurisdiction over the wetlands that are on the site. I had no intention to regulate and no jurisdiction over them. And I should note as well, it is not located within the drinking supply watershed. If you can go to the next slide, please. This slide just highlights the real fundamental issue. The red dash or red dotted line is the boundary line between New Canaan and Stamford. The site fronts only on West Cross Road and therefore the frontage is only in New Canaan. Hence, the desire to locate the house as we have, as we'll show you in a later slide, but clearly that's why we're here. We want to have the house front on the street and that's our only means of ingress and egress. It's worth pointing out as well, the chair mentioned the site falls within the one acre zone in New Canaan. It is also within the one acre zone in Stamford. There are different restrictions between those two zones. We have no intention of constructing any building on the Stamford side, although it is our intention that the septic system will be located on the Stamford side of the border. Next zone, please. Excuse me, next slide, please. So this slide demonstrates the area or lists the area of each of the portions of the site located both in New Canaan and Stamford. And given the way that coverage is calculated, which the formula is such that it is a baseline percentage, given the area of the site, plus a percentage of the area of the site. We are limited to coverage that is considerably below what it would be if we were permitted to calculate coverage based on the entire area of the site. I think it's also worth pointing out that this split boundary or the boundary line that straddles both municipalities not only affects this parcel, but affects the parcel immediately to the east and immediately to the west. Obviously, in different degrees, given that the line is diagonal, but I think this will demonstrate that to you. I want to point out that our proposed house is conforming with all other of the zoning regulations. So building height, side, front yard, rear yard setbacks, et cetera, despite the fact that we have this significant approach around what would be a rear yard. And we've tried to cite it as sensitively as possible, given those issues. So I want to point out as well, just some biographical details about Jack and Cherry that I, excuse me, Jack and Sharon Ferry that I think are very material there. They are senior citizens and the principal reason that they are moving to this site or have pursued this site is that they want to be on one story as they continue to age. Sharon has had several operations on hips and knees and so has increasing risks of mobility, et cetera. And what that means though, is that while we typically might be able to split building program between two levels, kind of conventional configuration bedrooms upstairs, first floor living spaces, the ferry's needs are such that we have been asked to put those all on one level. So as you can imagine, on the one hand, our coverage is being compressed or permitted a coverage as of right is being compressed by the characteristics of the site. And yet the demands for allocation of that coverage in the service of the program of the building are being stretched to the limits because we're being asked to put much more on one floor than we otherwise might. But I think it's an important piece of information that we have, something that we have had to try to do sensitively in design, which I think we have, but which obviously contributes to our ask before you tonight.
Ryan, Luke Tash is speaking. I have two common and a question. First off, the first question is if this lot was entirely in New Canaan, you'd have about 4,000 square feet of coverage allowed. And you're proposing 4,830 square feet. So you're proposing about 20% larger than would be allowed if you didn't have this line going through the property?
Yep. That's correct.
And my second, the second question I have, the second point I have is we can't consider, you know, your client's personal hardships in granting. They're not appropriate factors for us to consider. You should, I assume you knew that.
Understood. Just trying to give you some context on how the house design evolved there.
And why isn't this being done with a special permit? I thought this could get done with a special permit. Well, because you're exceeding the coverage?
That's correct, yeah.
So the lot line issue would normally be dealt with through a special permit, but here because you want to exceed the coverage for a one acre lot, you need a variance.
Correct. So it is worth pointing out that the regulations, the section 3.7 does permit, and we tried to explain this as best we could in the narrative, does permit or provide a mechanism by which application to the planning and zoning commission for a special permit would, under certain circumstances, or if certain criteria were met, permit a bonus of up to 40% of the coverage to be provided on the site. And that I mention, not because we're before you for a special permit, but for context, if this site were all in New Canaan, as you point out, we would still be as of right permitted less coverage than what we're asking for. But the way that the house has been designed, it is such that our application for a special permit would meet all of the requirements for that special permit. So if the commission, the planning and zoning commission chose to entertain that proposal, we certainly would comply with plenty of excess coverage in that regard. And I think that is also important context. It's not like we, you know, we're pulling that pie out of the sky, really trying to provide context for what would be appropriate here. And I think it's also
What provides the cup, so what provides the hardship for the additional 800 square feet? I understand you explained the hardship with the line runs through the middle, but that's really not a hardship for us. That's for P and Z. What's the hardship in the zoning contents for the additional coverage?
You're permitted to grant a variance of whatever you deem is appropriate. So just from a, from a mechanism standpoint, I'm not sure it would be possible for us to ask you for a variance to grant us coverage that we've permitted if this were entirely within New Canaan. And then to go to the planning and zoning commission and say, we've got a variance for that and now we would like to apply section 3.7 to this site and have them evaluate it. So instead, what we're asking you to do is evaluate the variance for the additional coverage, but causes of the fact that if we were not confronted with this hardship, there would be a mechanism by which we could get that additional coverage.
What would be the mechanism? What's the mechanism for the additional 800 square feet of coverage?
So section 3.7 of the, I just want to get that right, three, a subsection of 3.7 of the regulations says that if you build a house that has a building height lower than 18 feet or some portion of which is lower than 18 feet, that portion of which is lower than 18 feet is, can be increased by 40% of its building area. So in theory, if we were to max out coverage and then we were to build an 18-foot high, a building or a house that had a maximum building height of 18 feet, we could get 1.4 times the coverage if the planning and zoning commission granted a special permit for that. But we would, and it also requires that a restrictive covenant be placed on the property, which our clients would be open to, not permitting that to be changed. So if we were to make such application and if the commission were to look favorably upon it and we, we do indeed meet the criteria for such an application, in theory, that could be granted. So we're just simply trying to do it in an efficient way. And frankly, I don't know that there's another mechanism by which we could do it. Because as I said, we would be getting a variance and going to the plan, the zoning commission and asking for that bonus based on the variance amount.
That's the part I'm not understanding here, because I thought you said you could get 4,830 square feet under 3.7E through a special permit.
Our request is 4,830 feet. In theory, we could, if this site were entirely in Stamford and New Canaan, we could get 5,444 square feet if the entire house were built under 18 feet tall.
Is the entire house going to be under 18 feet tall?
It's, it's not, but most of it is. If you look at the graphic, actually Lynn, do you want to?
I'm looking at that on page three of your narrative.
Exactly. So the, the the western and eastern portions are, and in fact, the, the, the center portion is very close to it. If we needed to be and if it would satisfy a request from, from this board, we would be more than happy to buy. We think architecturally it is stronger the way it is. And at the end of the day, we want to do something that's going to be as sensitive to the neighborhood as possible. But it's not, it's not as if it's, it's entirely to make it pleasing from the street. There's no program on the second floor. This house is entirely one story. So it has no impact on, on the spatial requirements of it, so to speak.
Jessica Carden, I have a quick question. It looked like this was a recent purchase in 2020, the law and the current house. I'm just going to assume that the owners of the parcel had the intention to build a one-story house the entire time. Yet, did they do no due diligence on the restrictions associated with this lot?
No, that they bought it conscious of the restrictions and with the intention of making a request before this board, given that there is a very legitimate hardship for such a request. Obviously, you can, you can deny the application. But I think given what the presentation before you suggests, which is that this is an aberration that affects three lots on the street and in a way penalizes those lots and puts them in a situation such that if the intention of the regulations is to provide some degree of conformity in terms of massing scale, et cetera, in a neighborhood, well, this takes these parcels that are afflicted by this boundary line and says, you should be something different, which seems completely counterintuitive to what the regulations are intended to. So, but to answer your question, they, they bought it. And in fact, in the market that they're in, they had to compromise on any contingencies or other accommodations because they were, you know, just with such a competitive market and they were willing to take that risk. But it doesn't change the fact that it certainly would be much more beneficial in the street to permit building coverage consistent with every other property or what would be permitted on every other property of the street, other than three that are afflicted by this boundary.
This is John Mahoney. I think I'm a little confused on a couple of points. One is, I grow the street today and most of the street is older, either single family or, well, all single family, but either two-story or one-story homes of, you know, the size of the existing house or somewhat larger, but not significantly larger. I'm, I'm having a hard time. It seems back to Luke's point that part of the hardship, part of the alleged hardship here, claimed hardship, is that for understandable personal reasons, the applicant wants to build a single-family house. There's certainly enough coverage here to build a quite substantial house that would be as large as or larger than the homes in the area, given the coverage that's currently allowed. So I'm really struggling, one, with the hardship and, and, and the amount of the ask given zoning. And then the second question I'd, I'd like you to answer for us is if, you know, without coming for a variance, it seems to me that if you have 2,800 square feet of coverage as of right and you apply, you go straight to P and Z for a 40% bonus, you're at a 4,000-foot house or just shy of that.
Why wouldn't you do that?
Well, yeah, why wouldn't you do that? Versus, you know, us going through a variance, which is, you know, has a much higher standard to meet.
So I'll start with the second question, if that's okay. And I, it's a fair point. That we certainly could do that. And that being said, it seemed to us that there was a very clear case for how something that shouldn't otherwise adversely impact a property on the street is adversely impacted. Meaning, if this is a one acre zone and every other parcel on the street is not subjected to coverage that's cut in half by virtue of this boundary decision, this house has a legitimate hardship compared to any other one on the street. So it just seemed like a completely appropriate mechanism by which to do it. And that the hardship was one that is very legitimate. Obviously, it's up to you all to adjudicate that. And hopefully, we can make a strong enough case tonight such that you're comfortable doing so. As to the coverage and its ability to satisfy what the program might be of the house, I think it's worthwhile actually to look a little bit at the context of the street. And actually, Lynn, if you go down, I don't know, five or six slides, right here. We looked just at the immediate properties on the street in the, in the presentation of this slide. And, and, and we looked at what the assessor listed as the square footage. So one can't be totally sure that that's accurate, but at least it's some baseline, okay? And you can see that, that there is a pretty significant range from 1,700 at a floor and 3,500 at a ceiling there. Now, if you continue up the street, and I just did this research this afternoon, there are several additional houses which are larger than that, unfortunately, just lost the sheet. But, but one thing that is clear is that the street is, has changed in the past several years and undoubtedly will continue to change. Just further to the, the east of the subject property, there's a house that was recently renovated. There's a new one. There's another one about five houses up. That's over 5,000 square feet from the listing that I saw. So I think that from a context standpoint, you can make the argument that what we're proposing is completely within context. And what we're proposing by way of comparison is 3,400 square feet of conditioned space. So
I'm sorry, Ryan, when you're saying conditioned space, you mean air-conditioned?
It's an expression we use to classify living space. So for example, it doesn't include the garage, but neither would any of the assessments that you see before you on the screen.
Okay, thank you.
But it's actually material. So, and I think it invites an opportunity to address. So how do we get from a 3,400 square foot house to a 4,800 square foot ask? And so round numbers, the garage is about 750 square feet. It's a three-car garage. The exterior walls of the house, which are not conditioned space, those are about 400 square feet when you, when you take a tally of them. And this is a really important thing that I want to highlight. These are, the fairies are people committed to building something that is going to be a really good contributor to the street. This is not a kind of slapdash initiative here. They're going to have masonry on this house. And in fact, we could skinny down that exterior wall value significantly by changing the wall construction. But the whole bottom portion of the house is scheduled to be masonry to hide the foundation. So there are details like that that legitimately add to coverage, but they're doing it in the service of building something that is going to be a beautiful contribution to the street. And I don't say that, that's not a, a, me just sort of, you know, a commentary on the architecture. But fundamentally, that's something that you don't need to do to build the house. It's, it's an architectural flourish that is going to make it more appealing. There's a
Quick, quick, I'm sorry. I just, just to be clear, so if this were in New Canaan, all the whole property, you would still need to come for a variance? Is that what you're saying?
We wouldn't, we wouldn't come for a variance. We would go to the, the planning and zoning commission for a special permit under which we could be granted that additional 750 square feet, I think it is, that we're looking for over and above what would be permitted as of right if the property were entirely within New Canaan.
Ryan, but that's only if you shorten the house so the maximum height was 18 feet. And if you put a restrictive covenant on the land records, and I don't think the zoning board of appeals can record a variance with a restrictive covenant. So by coming here, there's no longer a restrictive covenant and you're not limited to 18 feet.
Well, we would be more than happy to make those accommodations.
I'm saying, I don't think, I don't think. I, I don't
If you made a condition.
I believe we've had this question in the past that I, maybe Lynn could answer, but I believe for some reason, we're not allowed to put a restrictive covenant on. It says no, no additional building or something like that. They can always come back and get another variance.
Lynn, do you have any? Well, I suppose another way to do is that in theory, and maybe Lynn, you have some color on this, you're approving the drawings that were submitted, which demonstrate compliance with that. And any deviation from those would require us to come back.
But that's not a restrictive covenant. That doesn't, a restrictive covenant means in the future, no one else can change what's on the property here. They could apply for another variance later on. There's nothing preventing that, that we could do.
Understood. I'm just trying to work through what, you know, something I'm just learning now about, about limitations that this board evidently has.
This is Jessica Carden. I think it brings us back to the same point Luke was raising about 20 minutes ago, which is, you know, if this is the process required, we still don't have a hardship to explain the portion that would be beyond what you could get through New Canaan. If you would have to get a special permit, restrictive covenant and all that process there. And if you're trying to get a variance through the board without those restrictive covenant and other conditions, we really need to have a hardship that runs with this land. And so I think that's the point that maybe perhaps all, or at least some of us are struggling with on the board right now.
Let me, let me try and make the case on the grounds that if, if this site were entirely in New Canaan, as I said, we would go to the, the planning and zoning commission and seek a special permit. Given that it is not entirely within New Canaan, in my view, there is a very clear hardship that this boundary line imposes on the site. We can't build the same amount of coverage that we might otherwise would. And one could make the case, well, one, one could make the case that while there is adequate coverage to build a house there, but that's a very slippery slope. How one defines what's adequate and what's inadequate, particularly when you have conditions either side of this house with differing measures on that scale. So I think that's a really tough precedent to set. But, but moreover, if we can agree that that then demonstrates a hardship, then further to that, it would be impossible for us to seek the special exception because I don't see how we go to the zoning board of appeal, to the planning and zoning commission saying, our coverage is actually this lower number. The ZB gave us a variance and we're asking you to enact a special permit based on it. And Lynn, I could be wrong. Perhaps you have some color on whether that's possible. If it is, we would be more than happy to do that. We want to do this in a way that's, that's the kind of cleanest for everybody. That is not meant to be, you know, anything other than what makes sense for everybody.
This is John Mahoney. I'd like to go back on something in, in terms of the hardship. We have plenty of parcels around this town that are undersized relative to the zoning. Either because that it was a remnant parcel or there was an old subdivision or something, but you have a half acre parcel sitting in a one acre zone. And sometimes those properties are also impacted by other things like wetlands and whatnot. That in and of itself to me is not a hardship until you start overlaying things like setbacks and everything else that render the site, you know, not unbuildable, although we have seen that, but certainly substandard. It seems to me that we're comparing apples and oranges a little bit with the conditioned square footage. These other ones that you have mentioned, particularly the newer ones, are getting to that size by going to a second floor. So they're able to build, if you will, a modern house. In this case, we, we, we have a, and, and I apologize, I don't want to, you know, I don't want to sound insensitive to the applicant, but we have a want on the part of the applicant that does not run with the land, which is the condition for a variance to build single story. And I'm sure, everything I've seen is going to be a lovely home and we'd love to welcome them to the town. The challenge is that to grant a variance, we need to have a real hardship that is unique to this parcel of land and not commonly, you know. And I'm struggling to really see it. It seems like the applicant's desire for understandable reasons to build single story is conflicting with an undersized lot. But the undersized lot does not, given current zoning, negate the ability to build a perfectly, you know, fine home in terms of the size relative to everything else. Now, so, you know, again, I'm kind of, I don't see where this meets a zoning, you know, a zoning application. It seems to me to be more appropriate with P and Z. I don't see where this meets a zoning, uh, you know, a, a zoning application. It seems to me to be more appropriate with P and Z. Now, they may not get you to forty-eight hundred square feet, but yeah, i- if what you're saying is true, then it gets you closer to four thousand.
So we have no objection. If, if that's the route that this board would like to see us take to, to doing that. But, but let me just, while we're all together, I think it is worthwhile just to ask a question of, is, would it be more palatable if we changed our ask to what would be permissible under the, 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 the regulations as of right, if this were on in, in New Canaan, which is to say, let's make the ask the, the, uh, I want to get the exact number.
Four thousand sixteen?
Yes, the four thousand sixteen rather than the forty-eight thirty. And actually Lynn, could you just go up one slide? I think it's worth pointing out as well. This is a house and, and I realize you're here to discuss hardship, but there's always in these applications, community input that helps determine this. We have, uh, nobody from the community that I am aware of who has, uh, 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 opposed the, the application. And in fact, we have one neighbor who's in support of it. This is going to be a net contributor to the neighborhood as the, the, the procedures of, of this board, uh, state should be a con- uh, a con- uh, a consideration in the evaluation. So I, I just think it's important for you to see this image as well. This is a, a shot from the street that I think really would be a, a beautiful contribution to, to the neighborhood. Um, but, but again, I go back to the question, is it, is it more palatable if we were to make the ask four thousand sixteen feet and then either hereafter figure out whether it makes sense to try in some fashion, make the request for forty-eight thirty before P and Z and a special permit, if such mechanism could be engineered? Or go to P and Z for, for a special permit on the baseline of the, the lower coverage, uh, at some point.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, this is Becky Walsh. I would rather see you go to, um, planning and zoning rather than come to us because if you're asking us to grant a variance and get you up to four thousand sixteen and then you go to P and Z to, you're gonna, yes, to increase it even more. It's, it's almost, I don't want to call it double dipping, but, um, you know, I, I don't really understand the hardship. Um, it would be lovely to have this beautiful house that's sitting in front of us on our computers right now, but, um, you know, you could build a two-story house and still be within within the, you know, permitted square footage, um, or coverage and, um, you know, that would be lovely for, you know, maybe a family, but I understand where your where your clients are coming from. And as we all age, I, it's nice to be on one level, but it, it doesn't seem that it's, uh, our board's job to accommodate people with variances just to, so that their lifestyle can be uh, accommodated as well.
Uh, any other comments from the board? Questions?
Hi, this is Ben Byless. Um, I think one of the things that, uh, uh, where I start from is that the applicant bought the property with knowledge of the restrictions. So there's no surprise and it doesn't have, the equities don't, don't lie in their favor as far as I'm concerned. Given that if the town border is a hardship, and I'll go with that as far as it, as we can. And we've dealt with this as if it were all inside of New Canaan. And, uh, we allowed a variance equal to what they could get if the property were all inside New Canaan. Then I could see giving a variance up to that four thousand number. Um, but I don't see where there is a hardship to go beyond four thousand. The hardship allows you to get the four thousand by erasing the border. But the getting above that four thousand doesn't, there's no other pertinent problem like a wetlands or something else, or a cliff, or immovable rocks like we often run into. Um, that would say, okay, you're entitled to a little bit more because this is a problem that only this, this is a true hardship that this property suffers from. So I could see if it were, if it were, if you wanted to start with the Z, with the, the zoning board of appeals, I would not be willing to go above the four thousand. But I think your better procedure would be to go to the P and Z and get your, your percentage increase.
If, if I could just address that, it, it, here's the, the, what I understand to be this issue and, and Lynn, feel free to chime in if you think I'm, I'm not getting the mechanics correct. The parcel across the street, let's just say the exact same parcel that doesn't have this municipal boundary line. In theory, it could go to P and Z, meet certain conditions and, and have coverage of five thousand four hundred and forty-four square feet, provided those conditions are met and provided the commission approved the special permit. This parcel, if we went to P and Z, forgetting about ZBA, we could only get a fraction of that. We could only get four thousand and something as a, a function of this lot line. Therefore, in a way, there is a prejudice against this parcel in the, the way the regulations are, are, are formatted or organized. The, the logic of, of why we proposed it the way we did is because we didn't think that we could get coverage at, but, uh, coverage such that we could then go, go to P and Z, if that makes sense. It's, it's as if we would need ZBA to approve to a certain level, that four thousand sixteen number, and then go to P and Z. But it seems to us that was a uh, not a, a possibility. And that's why we opposed it the way we did. Now, the, go ahead.
Go ahead. I'm sorry to interrupt. Go ahead.
So, so, uh, uh, that being said, I, I appreciate your position and I would rather walk away from this hearing, uh, i- if amenable to you all, where you took the position that we're not comfortable going into forty-eight hundred, but, but we do see the value of the hardship and, and don't take exception to going to the four thousand sixteen, which is what anybody else on the street would have who does not have this hardship. That's obviously your hands. I just propose an alternative.
This is John Mahoney again. I, I, I think your logic is, is flawed. First of all, if the house across the street were the same size, it's not, you know, if somebody buys a piece of property that is undersized relative to the zoning, given the way our current zoning laws work, their coverage, their allowable coverage would be reduced just based on the square footage of the, of the lot. So that is something that is not, you know, I'm, I'm looking at this almost as if it is an undersized lot as opposed to a one acre lot. The, the second thing is, is to me, the hardship here is not the undersized of the lot. The hardship is that, that the applicant for understandable personal reasons would like to build a single story. If that were removed, which is a personal choice, the house, you know, could be quite a bit, bit, you know, could offer quite a bit of living space well in excess of, 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 of what is needed for a three-bedroom house. So I don't understand what the hardship is that, that, that leads to zoning being overly restrictive. I, it, to me, it comes back to, uh, you know, this conflict between an undersized property and a, and a personal desire to build single story. Again, I'm not making a value judgment on, on their desire to build single story. I, I completely understand it. I guess the other question that I would ask to you was to, you know, since you did buy it and you knew it was an issue, was there an exploration with P and Z and the building department, uh, that talked about your options?
So to start with the last question, we, we didn't talk to the building department about it. We did meet with Lynn, uh, virtually to discuss the site and discuss uh, the, the application, uh, that we intended to submit and got some, some comments from her. Uh, we didn't discuss mechanics specifically on P and Z versus ZBA, but we, we, we did discuss what we were going to propose and what the issue was for us, which is to say that we were deficient in coverage by, uh, approximately half what otherwise might be permitted. I, I guess what is for me, uh, the part that I'm, I'm on the opposite side of the screen, so to speak, struggling with a little bit is that the, the, the whole point of the regulations, as I see them, whether in New Canaan or, or elsewhere. And I, and I grew up in the area. I'm super sensitive. We're, we're doing other work in New Canaan, super sensitive to the character of the town. Uh, and we try to be really, uh, uh, conscious of that when we're designing. The function of any zoning regulation is to ensure some degree of conformity in the character of an area or a neighborhood. It's not to be a strict constructionist about how those regulations are interpreted. And so that's why this system exists. That's why a zoning board of appeals exists, to provide relief when such relief affords the opportunity to provide a little bit more conformity, uh, or the opportunity for that among the buildings in and out. And, and even when I look at what the, the charter or the, the duties of, of the zoning board of appeals are, it references consideration of harmony with the purpose and the intent of the regulations, not the literal interpretation of them, of course. And also to give consideration for public health, safety, convenience and welfare, which there's no question that this doesn't have an impact on us. Property values. In my mind, there is no question that what is proposed will only positively impact property values, particularly given what somebody else might come, come through here and do if it were not the fairies. And I, I'm saying if, if they had not bought, somebody else would have bought this and toured it down and built a potentially a five thousand square foot box, which is not doing anybody, uh, a service. Um, and, and then the last one is to result in substantial justice being done in the public safety and welfare. Certainly there's clearly no compromise, uh, in the public safety and, and welfare. And, and, uh, uh, in my view, would be an injustice to penalize this site compared to what the other neighbors would, 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 uh, be permitted. So.
Ryan.
Ryan.
Let me interrupt you. This is Ben Byless. You're, you're making very good arguments, but if you, um, are, you probably aren't aware, but the Supreme Court of Connecticut has ruled that a very specific definition of hardship, which will justify a variance. And it isn't whether or not it's a good idea, whether it would be good for the character of the town or good for the, for the neighborhood. It has, the strictest rule is that if we don't give you this variance, your property is worth nothing. And your property, if without this variance, is clearly not worth nothing. It is worth a great deal. Your, your applicants paid a great deal, I'm sure. And you can build something that's if not what you want, at least very adequate. It's could be one story, it could be two stories, could be two stories with the master bedroom and bathroom on the first floor, so they don't have to go upstairs, that sort of thing.
Or add an elevator, which would add value.
There are, there is, it's just not close to being the kind of hardship that general, generally will justify, um, a, a, a variance. I would be willing to look at John, and I have a slight difference with John, where instead of looking at this as, as if it were a half acre parcel in a one acre zone, that's where the zoning regs make the problem. Here it's the border of the town, which is a little bit odd. It's inescapable. You got, you got a one acre piece of property that's cut in half by a town border. And I would be willing to consider that more of a hardship than a normal half acre property in a one acre zone. Um, but I certainly wouldn't go further than what might be permitted under, um, the regs for a one acre property as a bright square footage.
Then you start, Luke Tashen speaking, you start with Jessica's view, which I think is similar to my view and John's view on this, maybe Becky's, is that the variance is to prevent a regulatory taking. Okay. But they just bought the house. How is there a regulatory taking? Like, how are they losing anything of value? If this isn't granted. I mean, they bought it. It's, it's just like John was saying, you buy an undersized lot, you buy a half acre lot in a one acre zone. You know your square footage coverage, even if we allow you to rebuild it, is going to be smaller than if it was a one acre lot. You bought it knowing this was the case.
I'm trying to reach, uh, cause I think that hardship definition from the Supreme Court is extraordinarily overbearing. So.
It is, but that's not for us to overturn. That's
Managed to find variances where, um, a strict interpretation might not be, wouldn't allow it. And you know, I'm, I'm not disagreeing with you. I said the equities are not in the applicant's favor. They bought this property fully, knowing full well what was in front of them. And I think their best, I, really your best option, I think, is to go to the P and Z and ask for that percentage increase.
A quick point of, this is Jessica Card. I just want to get a clarification. The discussions that took place with Lynn, were they before the couple purchased the home or after?
Uh, my recollection is they were during negotiations, but I can try and find out just right now.
Brian, I think they were both. Some were before and some were either like right around the time you guys were negotiating or after. And it was always that it would go for a ZBA variance.
So Lynn, do we leave this open? What, what do we, how do we move forward from here?
Um, we can do multiple things. I mean, they, we could leave this open. Um, they could reduce the size of the, um, uh, house and bring it down to what would be, um, allowed on the, for building coverage if the, all of the property were in New Canaan and, um, follow, um, John Mahoney's, um, recommendation. They could reduce it further to comply with three point seven E and take it to the P and Z. Um, there are multiple options, but, um, the ask as, as it stands right now is just a straight building coverage and that's, um, that, that would have been a variance. So, but there, there are multiple ways it could be altered.
So would it be best if he withdrew the application at this point?
And they took the hint to the side.
Okay. Well, trying to give him some options, you know, to.
So I guess I have a question, which is that if we were to leave it open, is it possible that when it is revisited, that we adjust our ask? Or we have to refile to adjust that ask?
Yeah.
Downward, I'm saying.
You, you're gonna need to refile. If you were to come back to the zoning board with a reduced square footage to bring it to what would be allowed after all of the one eight, one point three acres were in New Canaan, you'd have to, um, modify your existing, uh, drawings and your, um, site plan so that it reflected what you were going to, what you were going for. And you'd also have to change the variance application to reduce the actual numbers in the variance. If you wanted to keep, sorry.
I'm sorry. Go ahead. I'm.
No, maybe, oh, and I was just gonna say, if you want to take a different route and you, you could also keep it open at the ZBA and ask to continue it and, um, reduce the, reduce the size, um, so that you could take it to P and Z with a, under three point seven E.
I guess that would be my preference, uh, provided we can do that because I don't want to foreclose opportunities without doing a little bit more research and making sure that, that, you know, we're, we're doing this in the right way. Um, so if I'm understanding correctly, we, we would potentially leave this open, reduce our ask to something lower than what it is now. And, and the ZBA could act on that without refiling to ZBA. We would then potentially have an application to, to P and Z, maybe not, but, but we can still make a, we can edit this application is what I'm getting at.
Right. And if three points, Luke Tashen speaking, under three point seven E, if the lot wasn't bifurcated by the Stanford town line, how many square footage house could they build?
Coverage could be five thousand four hundred and forty-four square feet with a maximum value of eighteen feet on the whole thing.
And if it is bifurcated, how much is the most they can build under three point seven eight?
Um, let's just do the calculation.
I, I thought you had that in the application.
Thirty-nine eighty-four.
Yeah.
I'm sorry, that's, that's under three point seven E?
Correct.
Before the P and Z.
Because, because then they only count one half of the property, John.
Okay.
Right.
So it's pretty similar basically where, so he could go in front of the P and Z, it sounds like. I think this is where he's saying he's stuck. If he goes in front of the P and Z, he's limited to asking them for thirty-nine hundred and four square feet. Otherwise, he could ask us for a variance. And some people on this board would, sounds like would be willing to give him a variance of the four thousand square feet. And then he's not limited to the eighteen feet and he's not limited to putting the deed restriction on. That's why I think he thinks this board is, I'm, I don't want to put words in his mind. But I, I think if I was in his position, that's why I would think the option here for four thousand square feet, if he could get it, would be better than having a deed restriction in thirty-nine hundred square feet.
But is he, has he convinced us about the But is he, has he convinced us about the hardship? I mean, I just.
I, I, I think there's some people, it's always gonna be a hard sell to convince them of a hardship here.
Well, that and or, um, that the ask is, is the minimum necessary to remove the hard, to address the hardship.
Correct.
Right.
You can get 3904 from the town.
Hmm.
From PNC as a, just a special permit.
Well, and I don't know how difficult that is or isn't. I mean, that's up for PNC to decide. I don't think it's us. Right for us to take action, that we can use that, I guess theoretically to justify our action. But I don't want to say that we would do it because PNC would do it. I don't know what they would do or not do.
No.
No, I'm not saying that. I'm saying that's why he has these two options. He, I think in his mind. That he has a, one potential option is 4,000 square feet. In front of us versus. Versus 3,904 in front of PNC, because PNC in applying the calculation is only going to count half the lot.
Yeah.
Understood, but the fourth, the way we get to the 4,000 feet is just assuming the lot is magically not divided.
Correct. That's what I'm saying.
But, but it still gets to the question, we don't magically assume an undersized lot in a one acre. You know, a half acre lot is a one acre lot. I mean, wha- what's the amount? As Lynn put in her, her planner's memo. You know, we have to grant the minimum, uh, allow, or we don't have to, but we should not grant more than the minimum allowed to remove the hardship.
I understand that. And that's why I said, I think in front of the board, you might have trouble getting to 4,000 square feet.
Yeah, I, I'm not sure that I'd even be in the 4,000 feet. I mean, I'm not there yet myself, just being completely transparent.
I think all, all he needs is two people on this board to vote against it. And I believe in its denying.
That's correct.
So there's some pretty. Some people who are pretty much more against us than we often see.
Um, so. I guess, Ryan, what do you want to? What do you want? How do you want to proceed?
I guess if there is no, uh, uh. If, well, let me put this way, I would rather not have you vote on it and deny it. So in my view, at this point, there's one of two options. One is to leave it open. The other one is to, to withdraw the application. Provided the latter is a viable option at this point. And given those two options, I would rather leave it open so that we could. Think through this a little bit more, provided that, that I'm not missing something.
Right. But we also can't promise that if you do your changes, that it's going to come back in front of us and, you know. We, we, we do look favorably on that. And in the past, we, you know, we do appreciate the extra effort. Um, so sometimes that things do change, but we can't make that promise at this point. Is that, is that?
Totally understood.
Want to be, you know, transparent about that.
Yeah, and I appreciate that.
Yeah, I think we, this is Becky Walz. We've had this issue before where. You know, we kind of took a temperature of the board and, um, suggested somebody not spend a lot of money changing plans. If we're not really going to vote in favor of it. Um, so maybe one of the things you want to do is go back with your clients and say. You know, what do you think about putting two of the bedrooms on a second floor? Um, you know, just trying to. Figure out a way to, to make it a little more palatable. And as Laura said. You know, we, and Ben, I think indicated, we do sometimes, you know, give a little leeway. Um. But it's not, we don't like to give a huge ask, as John Mahoney says. If it's, if it's a smaller ask, we're more inclined to, to vote favorably on that.
I understood and I appreciate that.
Ri- Ryan, if you move this lot further back, I mean, this house further back on the lots, it was all in Stanford, how big of a house could you build, build in?
Uh, it's a basic, uh, you know, I didn't do the Stanford coverage calculation, but, but there are other constraints back there, including wetlands.
The septic, right?
Uh, yeah, well, we might. Put the septic in the front, but, but we, we end up with a lot of regulatory issues around the wetlands doing that. Um, not to mention we disrupt the street wall. So I'm not convinced that it's in anybody's best interest other than meeting the strict. You know, terms of the regulations, at the end of the day, does really anybody benefit from that? Um, but I, I unfortunately don't know the exact coverage.
I mean, cause, cause you have the. What's the, um, what's the Stanford wetland boundary line? Cause there's a 25 foot line on here. I see that's sketched on the wetlands. Is that it?
Brian, do you know if it's 25 or 50? I think it also depends on which direction. Up and or down, or up and or down gradient. I just don't know off the top of my head. Twenty-five minimum. Sorry, Brian, you're muted.
Right. Sorry about that. Brian Smith from DeAndrea Surveying Engineering. Uh, 25 foot, uh. Review jurisdiction buffer from the wetlands. In Stanford. It looks like there's a big chunk of land if you move this house just back. So maybe in Stanford, you could fit a one story house. I don't know what this zoning is, but maybe you put this on the back half of the lot.
Yeah, the, the other thing that exacerbates it, I'm, I, I, is that we end up having to. Meet the rear yard setback in Stanford as well. So it's not, it's a little bit deceptive. If you just look at the, the property line, I'm not saying it's not possible. It may very well be possible. And honestly, we didn't consider it. Um, but certainly would be happy to, to, to look at it more closely.
Uh, Cynthia or Rich, did you want to, um. Have anything wanted?
No, I don't have anything.
Yeah, I, I don't. I agree with the majority of the board here. So I don't have anything.
Okay, Ryan. Um, so Lynn, do we, or I guess it's up to Ryan whether he wants to leave it open? Is that?
I, I would like to leave it open, yes. If that's okay with you all.
Okay, so is there, um, do we just, is that just enough for the record, Lynn, that we're going to, um. Leave this, this, uh, variance open until, I guess, next month or?
Yep, we can leave it open till next month. And, um, I, I mean, I can discuss options with, uh, Ryan in more detail. Um, and, I mean, either way, they're gonna have to, it, it sounds like they're gonna have to, um, reduce their drawings. To, uh, bring the size of the house down. And now there's suggestions to move it further back on the lot. The only thing that needs to be, um. Kept in mind is that they have all of the habitable space, all of the building, whether the principal or the accessory buildings, all of the building itself has to be in one municipality or the other.
Mm-hmm.
So they can't, they can't bifurcate the house with the municipal boundary line.
Okay. And also I know we, um, mentioned that the, about the, it has to be approved by. Both towns, the septic and the engineering, correct?
Yeah, so they would have to get the, uh, both departments if their, their plan is to put the septic in the, uh, Stanford portion of the property. And, um. They want to follow the Stanford rules, regulatory rules for that. And, um, but our health director would need to sign off. On the actual building permit that's issued by the New Canaan Building Department. And so. Um, if you guys were inclined to improve it at some point, we would just ask for a condition that. You know, it would have to comply with, uh. Get approval from, yeah, but approval from both the New Canaan Health Department and the Stanford Health Department. And if not, they'd have to come back for. Um, an additional review by you guys to modify the variance.
Okay, um, so is that how the direction you want to go, Ryan?
Yes, please.
Okay. Okay, so the variance is withdrawn for this month.
Well, no, it's just held open, not withdrawn.
Yes. Okay, I'm sorry. It's held open. Okay.
All right.
All right.
Thank you all very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
It was a great application, by the way, Ryan.
Thank you.
No, I'm, I'm serious. It was extremely well done and very clear and helpful.
Well, good. I'm glad to hear that. Thank you.
I agree, Ryan.
Thanks. Bye-bye.
Bye. Okay, let's go on to the approval of our minutes. Um, are there any comments?
Ben, did you have any edits?
I wasn't here, if you recall.
Oh, but that's never stopped you, Ben.
Well, I, I didn't, you know, I didn't even look, because. It, it was like one thing. You all got reappointed, right?
Oh, right. Um, can I, do I hear of an approval?
I move approve the minutes of last meeting.
And second?
I second it.
Okay, that's great. Uh, any other matters?
Um, I'm gonna mention that I'm gonna ask, uh, tell Kevin that I'm gonna step down from the board.
Oh, Ben.
No, that's all right. That's all right. There are a lot of good people waiting to, to fill my spot and, um, I'm ready to just, uh, move on. And, uh, I wanted to thank you all for the wonderful time we've had together. And, uh. I appreciate everything, you know, the, the patience you had with me and, uh, the good laughs that we've had. So I, I wish you all well. And, uh, I, I hope we'll all have a chance to break bread together someday when we can all be in the same room without masks.
Oh, Ben, you've been such an amazing part of it.
Yeah, you really have.
I've really learned so much from you and you're such an integral part of it. And I really truly will miss you.
Well, that's nice of you to say. I appreciate.
I completely agree, Ben. You've, you've been a wonderful member of the board. Keep me on the straight and narrow.
Yeah.
And are you, um, moving or are you just resigning?
Just, just ready to go back. We're gonna travel a little. We're gonna go see grandkids in LA and Philadelphia and. You know, and, uh, it's just, I'm ready. That's all. I don't even know how many years I've been on. I think it's about five or six, but. That's where my head is. So I, I thank you all for the very kind words and I wish you well.
Well, thank you, Ben. Really.
Thank you.
We'll miss you.
Yeah, I've learned a great deal from you, so I really appreciate it.
Yeah.
I give you a virtual hug.
Not, not to stop this conversation, but we have an open, um, motion on the table with a second and you need to take a vote.
Passion in favor.
Oh, Edmonds in favor.
Mahoney in favor.
Bielis in favor.
Cardon in favor.
Doll in favor. That was for the minutes, correct, Lynn?
Yes, yes. Sorry, I didn't mean to, um, interrupt the conversation, but.
No, thank you.
Are we looking for next month, Lynn?
Um, there's nothing right now, but you have a, um, an open item. So we'll see what happens.
Right. By the way, I was, I, I was thinking this meeting was gonna get canceled because I had gone on. The website. Normally things that are coming up are starting to be posted. Well, in advance of the meeting, but.
You know what? And can I just say, I thought it was great that Lola sent the materials this time instead of trying to dig, dig for it. I thought it was incredibly helpful and I was able to feel very prepared. And, um, so please pass that. And I, I'll, I did email her, but. Um, uh, it would be great if she could do that. I know it's not part of, you know. It's not easy to do that, but I just thought it was so incredibly helpful. Did other people feel that as well?
I absolutely agree.
Yes.
Yeah.
So.
Okay. Okay.
The direct link shape provided was also, I, I don't know.
Yes.
You know, the attachments, but also just having a direct, direct link was really.
So, so helpful and so organized. I felt really, um, it, it really made a big difference in my life, that's for sure.
Lynn, is there any discussion of going in person yet?
Um, not yet, um, that I've heard. Um. We're, we're resuming for the, um. For the immediate future for, I, I would imagine for the next couple of months at least.
I would imagine through September, if I had to guess.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, there's a, yeah, there's, um. I mean. Uh, the executive orders don't necessarily, um, allow for hybrid. Um. There's discussion about that. I don't know where it's gonna go and Governor, Governor Lamont's gonna have to, um, you know. Determine whether he's gonna extend some of the executive orders further or not. So.
Okay. Well, just keep us posted.
I will, definitely. I mean. As soon as, as soon as they declare it open, you guys would be coming back to town hall. So, yeah.
Okay.
I can't believe it's gonna be signs, but, uh, Ben, though. That's not good.
If, if you need me, you know where to find.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I think Ben's going back to the building committee. That's what he wants to do.
He'll heckle us from the audience.
Yeah.
Is Mike Dineen on still?
It looks like it.
Okay, well, hi, Mike. We'll see you around.
Okay, uh, our meeting is adjourned. Thank you.
Bye-bye, everybody.
Thank you, everybody.